You are watching XS LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the June 13, 2023 meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
We have three out of five. Dinah, our president, is running late, but we have three. We should make a quorum, so we'll go ahead and get started at seven o'clock. So I'd like to call to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to make a short note. We can't run the Zoom meeting yet because the verification of the Dinah's email, if she shows up, we can't start that Zoom meeting.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of God, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let me start with a roll call. President Dinah Dumbriz. I believe she will be late, but she's not here at the moment. Michael Martinez, myself, I am here. Ralph Fox.
President.
Sam Paxton.
He likes to zoom in.
Zoom in. Rich Young.
Here.
Clerk Treasurer Joan Lewis.
Here.
Attorney Brad Adamski. Not present for now. Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
He's absent.
Absent?
I got him for.
Okay. Police Chief Mark Swistec.
President.
Thank you. Park Board President Dolly Millick. Absent.
He's not here.
BZA President Matt Bowen.
He's not here.
Absent. Building Commissioner/Code Enforcement Officer Deb Chubb.
Here.
Thank you, Deb. Flood Plane Administrator Ray Dumbriz.
Yes.
Plan Commissioner President Ralph Fox.
Yeah.
Website Sam Amanda Arnold.
Absent.
And Road Commissioner Bob Sikelsky.
Right.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, did everyone have a chance to review the meeting agenda? The latest one? Okay. Any questions, any comments, any updates to the agenda?
I haven't.
Rich? All right, I need a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's meeting.
Yeah, second?
I'll second.
Second. And all in favor, say aye and state your name.
Aye.
Ralph Fox. Ayes, three ayes. Ralph, myself, Michael Martinez, and Rich Young. Yes, forgot. All right. So with that, moving on to number four on the agenda, the minutes. Approving the meeting minutes of May 9, 2023. Everyone should have received them in paper or electronic copies. Okay?
I have a comment on it. I just received a message from Sam that he didn't like something that I put in here. He wanted it changed, but it's too late to change it. So you have a choice whether you want to approve it tonight or if you want to wait till July, till I can get the corrections anyhow.
Do we know what it was? I mean, did anything pressing?
It had something to do with the nuisance. He said it wasn't a nuisance ordinance. Thank you. Now I can see. It had something to do with the nuisance ordinance or the form. I wasn't sure how he was saying it. I would like to request that if there's going to be reports from the council, that they could have been writing to me or send them to me so that I have exactly what they want put in the agenda. Because it's very difficult for me to hear Ralph, Sam, and Attorney Adamski. I have three people that need to be on these reports. They like they drone out, I get part of it, and then, yeah, it's...
Council members, tell me if I'm wrong, but I'd like to hold off if it's something that needs to be updated, a major update, until next meeting for the meeting minutes to be approved.
I'm okay with continuing until the next meeting.
Okay.
Just continue it?
Yes. Do you need a motion for that?
I have a motion to continue the vote on the meeting minutes until the next meeting.
Till July.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All right, and all in favor, state aye and state your name. Michael Martinez, aye.
Aye, Ralph Fox.
Aye, Rich Young.
Okay.
All right, so we will review the May 9 minutes in our next July Town Council meeting. Moving forward to number 5A. Clerk Treasurer...
We have two of her meetings that need to be done. The executive meeting and the one for the workshop.
Okay, I did not have the executive meeting minutes on this agenda?
She never puts them on.
Okay. So this would be 4B then, for the executive minutes, correct?
Right, the executive council meeting.
E, yep.
And then there's the ones for the council workshop.
Got it. So 4C, council workshop, okay?
Okay.
Let's see here. Did we get a copy?
I put a copy in here.
Say that again, Joan?
I put a copy on the internet for the ones who have internet. Rich has them in the paper file.
Okay. Did anyone have any questions, comments, have time to review those minutes or those notes from the executive session first?
I don't remember why we continued those from the last meeting.
You did continue them from the last meeting. These were after the last meeting.
Okay.
So they weren't continued. Because you had meetings two days after the regular. Do you need copies of them?
If you have a copy ready or available, I'd take one. Thanks.
Rich has a copy. I put it in his packet. These are the ones that have to be signed that I'm giving you.
Okay, so let me just start and end with the executive meeting. So any questions, comments about the executive meeting notes?
No.
All right, need a motion to approve the executive meeting notes as is?
Only a motion to approve the executive meeting minutes from May 11 as is.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And you do not need these signed, the ones that you sent, the paper copies for the executive meeting?
Yeah, I need those signed. And since Dinah's not here, we'll need to toss her name out and put your name underneath it.
Okay, I'll do that now. I'll just do that now so I won't miss much.
There should be two copies.
Yeah, there's two right there, I believe. There's a second one right there.
I wish I knew too. It's going to be young, I'm young. It's going to be late, I could have changed that.
It's okay. There's one. I just did...
Did you find your copy?
What?
The executive meeting?
Yeah, I was looking for the workshop.
There you go. Here's one copy, here's two copies.
I had them right underneath the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, here are your two signed copies for the executive town council meeting.
Thank you.
You didn't have an extra copy of that council workshop, did you?
Which one, the work...
Council, yes, thank you.
The council workshop.
And gentlemen, we are now reviewing the council workshop meetings that happened on May 11. Everyone should have a paper copy of those.
Did you find yours, Rich?
What?
Your copy for the workshop.
These look good to me from what I recall. Good. Any questions, comments on the meeting minutes from the hybrid workshop?
Hi, Joan, there's one minor typo under...
Forget it.
No, doesn't mean a difference. What is it on? I don't have a copy. They've given out my copy.
They have two, I can use those two to sign.
Okay.
The section, second from the bottom of Lake County Assessor. Nice little last sentence, the word "build" is missing, there's a B.
Missing a B. Oh, I'm sure that no one could figure that one out. Thank you.
It's probably written.
Yep. Your eyes are better than mine.
I changed it and put my initial on it.
Okay, we're good.
Rich, any comments? All right, need a motion to approve the council workshop notes with the correction of the word "build" in the LaPorte County Assessor section.
I'll make that motion.
Need a second? Rich, I need a second, if you agree.
All right.
All right. And then, all in favor, state aye. Aye.
Aye.
Ralph Fox, Rich Young, and Michael Martinez gave three ayes.
Okay.
And I'm removing Dinah's name and title and putting mine in there beside it.
Thank you. These are good children's reports. I'm going to pass them on.
Are one. Is there another copy over there, gentlemen?
What?
Regarding, I need two copies to sign that, right?
Right, I'll take one of theirs. Ralph should be on the internet.
You have a copy of that workshop? The one there just...
I just gave it to you, Rich.
I got it. I found it.
Don't worry.
You found it, good. I know, they're terrible. I know, I want to...
Here's a second copy.
Better situation. Thank you.
All righty. So we just approved 4C council workshop meeting notes. Are those all the notes, Joan, before we move forward?
Those are all, I mean, for me, it's all the...
Okay. So gentlemen, moving forward, we are now on 5A, which is the clerk treasurer invoices and claims.
Great, good afternoon. We have a few this month. I'm going to start with the May 31th additional vouchers. And Rich, I believe I've got all those in there. The only ones that you will not have, I'm not going to be putting the, anything dealing with payroll on internet. If you want to see the actual vouchers and the amount broken down, you will have to come into the office to see them. I'll go ahead and read the vouchers for the May additional vouchers. Pioneer Lumber, that one for somebody, like Tuminus Materials, which is asphalt patch, $160.90. AT&amp;T Mobility, $94.60 for the, what do I want to say? For the iPhone. U.S. Postal Service, four rolls of stamps. That was to send out the billings that we send out. And Maple City Tree, to remove a tree between Hiawatha and Light and Edge, $1,200. Big Four Construction for Shin, that's technically Shin Incorporated, for the refund...
Recording in progress.
Building permit for 94, I mean, $210 for a grand total of $1,917.52.
Make a motion to accept the vouchers?
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Okay, need signatures. While you're signing them, I will go ahead and read the vouchers for this month.
Who's it going to be?
What?
This one's a little lengthy. Town of Palm Beach, for police protection, $5,174. Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department, for rental, $105. Office Depot, there's a breakdown, $123.26 for printing 13 copies of the plan, comprehensive plan. There's $132.05 for the keyboard for the computer and file folders. And there was folders that we purchased to put the comprehension plan in the folders for everyone. And that was $20.64. And there was additional seven copies that was made for $64.26. The reason that they were two different billings on it is it was, it's self-service now at Office Depot. And they can only take so many copies unless one of the salespeople are there to change it. And so they changed it for me after we did seven copies. And that was a $64.26. Republic Services, $4,659.72 for the refuse collection. Pioneer Lumber, $60.67. They returned washers and hex leg bolts, and that was $60.67. To reinstall the sign, that was also purchased from Pioneer, that was $274.72. And Pioneer, for a credit of $68.40 for the return washers and leg bolts that were not correct. Department of Waterworks, $9.36 for Kincaid Park. Pioneer Lumber for blacktop repair, $161.90. Baker Joy, Professional Services, Accounting Services, for reestablishing the cumulative fund. $229.48. Indiana Public Employers Plan, this is insurance on the employees. When they did an audit of the payroll from last year, they said we were short in paying $54.28. Comcast for internet, $121.30. Jim McKay for redoing some things on the email, $75. Brenda Heckman, travel to the bank and post office, $45. Deborah Chubb, postage for Code Enforcement of CO5 Groveland. Access LaPorte County for videotaping, $500. Friedman and Associates, $378.75. That's on the Grobelny. Brad Adamski for county record search regarding sewer, phone calls to Deb Chubb regarding Cummins, $1,687.50. Michiana Shores Volunteer Fire Department, $3,693.16. NIPSCO for streetlights, $16.68. NIPSCO for electric for the garage, $38.34. For garage gas for the garage, $73.56. Department of Waterworks, water for the garage, $9.36. Simcoe Signs for, two printed sign boards for message boards, $1,131.16. For a grand total of $18,768.88.
Chairman, just to confirm, we're no longer paying for those two internet fees anymore?
No, we still are paying for two internet fees.
Where would I have seen those, outside of this Comcast?
They won't, because they usually come separate. You're going to get one for the, usually one comes at the end of the month and the other one comes at the beginning of the month.
Oh, just billing dates are different.
Billing dates.
Any questions?
No. Yeah, what town sign would I have to reinstall?
What?
Reinstall town sign, I have one.
All right, Bob Sikelsky and somebody else installed it. I understand there's no installation fee with this for the town sign.
Who's town?
The big wooden one we had.
It's somebody.
The map.
The map.
It's all the...
Which one are you looking at, Rich?
It's on the front page, but what says Pioneer Lumber.
Okay, damn, that's for the town map. They moved it over here away from the street. They have it back here by the mailbox.
Installation?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right here.
I don't have anything. I thought this was volunteers going, and I'm not sure.
Sam, did you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you, Michael.
All right. If no other questions, need a motion to accept the invoices for June 13?
I'll make that motion.
Need a second? I'm sorry, I need a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All right, four ayes. Okay?
Just hold on a minute, I want to show that Sam's here.
Yeah, he's virtual.
It's a good thing we have Sam. Okay. Okay, I need some signature.
What's next in terms of invoices, gentlemen?
Next, in terms of invoices, I have three of them, all regarding payroll. May 31 for payroll for Deb Chubb in the amount of $3,959.54. That's transferring everything over to the general from payroll.
I'll make a motion to approve that expense.
Need a second? Sam, seconds.
Okay.
All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Four ayes.
The other one, I think, is for the April 30 payroll taxes, which again was for Deb Chubb's payroll in the amount of $539.49.
I'll make a motion to approve that expense.
Need a second? Sam, seconds. All in favor, state aye.
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 Four ayes, aye, so four ayes.
One absent.
Sorry, Rich, do you have a question?
How much did you say the total was? I don't have that one, or I have one, $551.
The $551 is the next one. The next one is for the May taxes, payroll taxes, for the same thing, all the taxes that are paid by employer and the employee for $551.
Make a motion to approve it. I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There was an aye from you, Rich, too. No, four ayes. What else, Joan?
That's it.
Well, Rich is signing those. There was one here, I didn't have a date on it, Joan, just over there.
Uh huh.
Right here.
Oh, I got missed one. It's easy enough, thank you.
There's the last one.
Thanks.
All right, that was it, right, Joan? Turn the check.
That's it, yes, for me.
Okay. Moving along. We now move to 6A resolutions and ordinances. Ordinance 2023-05, an ordinance amending the special use provisions and creating a short-term rental permit. Safety and security program of the Town of Michiana Shores, Indiana, first read.
Okay, I don't want to read this whole thing. I asked Brad what options I had, and he must be tied up and was not able to respond. I did some research, and it is not required to read these things verbatim. What you have to do is read the introduction and give an overview of the ordinance. In this case, I will overview what the changes are between the new ordinance replacing the old ordinance.
Did you send me that last revised?
I believe I did, yes, but I can resend it.
Go ahead and resend it because it was nothing in that I received this week.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay. So this is the Town of Michiana Shores Ordinance 2023-05, An Ordinance Amending the Special Use Provisions in Creating a Short-Term Rental Permit Safety and Security Program of the Town of Michiana Shores, Indiana. This new ordinance does replace the old ordinance and wants the new ordinance to prove the old one will be frequent peeling. So what I'm going to do is give you a quick overview of the changes. This draft, by the way, is available for viewing. We did have the Plan Commission meeting a week ago. We had the public comment meeting. A number of people showed up. It was very informative, good feedback. And subsequently, the Plan Commission did approve this proposed ordinance and sent it to the town council. So the biggest change in this ordinance is that we will, in the future, limit the number of short-term rental permits to 25 in the town. Currently, I think we have 17 permanent and short-term rentals, so just bumps that number up a bit. But those will be active permits. And if someone chooses not to continue that process and drops out, that a new permit would be available for someone else. There's now a requirement that you have a local agent. That is defined as someone that can get to the property within 30 miles or they can get to the property within 45 minutes in case the presence of an required. They're now required to have a septic inspection when they go through the process. They must now own the home for six months before applying for a short-term rental, starting the process. They must use Laporte County licensed contractors to do all the work on the property. Fireworks by short-term rental guests are prohibited. And there is no case where they're allowed to use fireworks. We now will fine people for advertising that they have a short-term rental in Michiana Shores if they don't have a valid permit. They're required to display the permit at all times, whether they're renting at that time or not. There was a lot of confusion about that, so we verified that. And for owner-occupied short-term rentals, the state does not require... Does not allow us to require a permit per se, but we are requiring them to register with the town so we know who they are, what they are, at least have that information. And that's about it, Mike.
Thank you for working on that, Ralph. And just for the audience that we have, Ralph, we have first reading, so the next steps will be revised.
Okay, so this will be an opportunity for town council members in particular to provide input to the draft. But, you know, any input is acceptable, even if you didn't have a chance to make the public hearing. But the ones that we would take into advisement to make changes will be ones sponsored by town board members. So we will have the second and final reading at the next meeting. If someone does propose significant changes, we may have to stretch that out and have another reading. Just keep in mind that our moratorium ends September 12th, I believe. And since we do this once a month, we will run out of time if we don't keep... But we do have a little bit of that for you.
Okay. I have no questions. Any feedback or comments I gave during the meetings at work, so...
Certainly.
Sam, any questions or comments regarding the ordinance 2023-05 that Ralph just mentioned?
We can't hear you, Sam.
You're on mute.
I apologize for that. No, I'm familiar with the changes, having reviewed them with Ralph and appreciate all Ralph's effort on this. I would not have any questions.
Rich, any questions?
No, when Ralph brought this over the other day, I raised a couple of things to clarify. Can you sell your home to your past tenant on... But it's clarified when you have to own the home for six months before you can apply. So I don't see why I have to... I don't need...
But we have between now and next month to...
I don't think we ever had a limit before.
No, that's the big...
Yes, yeah, but we had discussed that during...
And we said about 17.
Well, we have 17 permitted short-term rentals today.
No, appreciate your work.
Yeah, thanks, Ralph. Okay, no other comments by the council members. We'll move on to number seven, departmental reports, started with Police Chief Mark Swistec.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of May, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 354 calls for service when compared to 222 calls for service in the previous year for an increase of 132 calls for service. I attribute the majority of that to possible increased productivity, traffic enforcement specifically. During the month of May, 28 incident reports were taken. Total of 15 individuals were arrested. Three were felony arrests, one for possession of meth, one was a felony vehicle pursuit where the driver was charged with possession of marijuana-resistant law enforcement, and one felony OWI operating while intoxicated arrest. Eight arrests were related to traffic offenses. Of those eight, four individuals were arrested for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated. The other arrests for the month were underage consumption of alcohol, violation of protective order related to a domestic dispute. And overall, it was a very busy month for us. Specific to the Town of Michiana Shores, May 9th, we had a traffic arrest where Deputy Jason Yagowski observed a vehicle disregarding the stop sign on El Portal Drive in Oftale. Pound stopping the vehicle, the 19-year-old Michigan City resident lied without her identity. It was then discovered that she was also operating a motor vehicle without a driver's license. Therefore, she was arrested for operating without ever receiving the driver's license in Paulson Farming. On the same day, May 9th, Deputy Jason Yagowski was dispatched to 200 block of Pocahontree Drive in reference to an abandoned vehicle which was obstructing the roadway. And he impounded that vehicle to cover the garage. And then on May 10th, Deputy Matthew Farthing, just outside the town on US 12, was patrolling, observed the vehicle at a high rate of speed, clocked the vehicle at 101 miles per hour in a 55 mile per hour zone, pound stopping the 41-year-old driver out of Michigan City. Was issued a citation for reckless driving as a Class C misdemeanor and issued a court date in Laporte County Traffic Court. Aside from that, are there any questions? All is well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Fire Chief Gary Bendix, would I believe Bob, you're filling in for him?
Yeah. My mom carried $204.35 in the month on the 3rd meeting, General Meeting, the 10th Business Meeting, 17th Training, 24th Training, and the 31st Division of General Meeting. Calls through the month on the 2nd. Angie drives for a fire alarm. On the 3rd, doing drive for medical call. On the 5th, I was at the lighting's down. On the 9th, doing drive for medical call. And the 10th, Auto-Lotting Trail for medical call. On the 11th, Manhattan Trail for medical call. On the 13th, Killdeer for a fire alarm at 60 degrees. On the 16th, Aborn Drive for medical call. 22nd, Killdeer Way for a structure fire. I think he's got that wrong. That was a couple of months back. On the 23rd, Pontiac Drive for a fire alarm. And on the 25th, Hillside Drive for a medical call. So one fire and one first responder from Michigan Shores, two fire and two first responders from Michigan, Michigan. No fires and one first responder for Dylan and two for mutual assistance.
Any questions, this councilman?
No, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Bob. All right. 7C Building Commissioner Code Enforcement. Everyone should have that's present a copy of the report. And Sam, I believe you have the electronic copy?
Yes.
Yes, so we issued 11 building permits, since the last meeting, and 10 citations. Most of them, I think, 11. One for fence installation without permit, but the rest were death skin violations.
I do appreciate you putting on here like the first versus second of violations for the citations issued. So thank you for that. Any questions, councilman? Our members?
No.
No.
All right. Thank you, Deb. Next up, we have the Park Board, Gene Paxton.
At our May 22nd meeting, elections were held. I was elected President, Skip Laco, Vice President, Kevin Chung Secretary. We've had several volunteers come forward to plan different mini areas in the parks and nature trail. The Natos, Teresa Massa, Brenda Heckman, the Chuns, the Vanes, and Chris Wolf. The village delivered blue decorative pots, the new stock 37, and those were planted. At our meeting on May 22nd, we reviewed improvements with Michael. He is going to give a surprise for removing the railroad ties that are buried beneath the surface in some areas of the park. He suggested we take those out because last year we had a beehive that developed in one of the ties and they're kind of a little rough area for metal kits and unevenness. So he's going to give a surprise to remove those and mulch the low spots. He's going to remove that broken road that we wanted to remove last year. And we trashed an old, broken-down, perfect table. On May 31st, we met with the Shirley Heinz Land Trust, Director Chris Kraus, with regard to the conservancy request by the town council. Chris Kraus and Ralph Fox and the Park Board members walked the nature trail so he could look at the land that we have. Also met General Lewis at the town office. He requested an old remediation plan that was done when the nature trail was done. And the Club Treasurer said that she could forward that plan to him. And our next meeting is June 26th.
And those, I'm sorry, Gene, you had mentioned the railroad ties. Which park was that? Put here.
Yeah, they're buried. I didn't know they were there. But when I had the bee incident last year, I think maybe found them. The hive was underground and I wanted that.
As far as the remediation plan, he has that.
He does.
He has it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Gene. Moving forward, 7E Road Commissioner, Bob Sokowski.
We had 16 hours for the month. We had a patch of potholes, started mowing. We had tree down on Dead End of Sunset. I think that was it for the month. With the map being reinstalled, been in charge of doing some lighting out here on the building for, because it gets pretty dark on the sidewalk. I guess the older people were a little nervous about it. And that research has also would request a solar light to be put on the town garage and also, that would also light up that map. The cost of that is $219.00 around Amazon. I'm going to be ordering one from the fire department. So I thought what I would do, I'd get approval from the fire department tomorrow night. You store two of them and Joan can just reimburse the fire department. If that's okay.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
It's awful dark over there.
Okay.
Is my call a comment or a question possibly? Bob and I had a conversation about the town map project and it also brought up, Bob brought up whether I knew where the, what the status was of paving. I know that we had petitioned for a grant. We wanted a grant to have that, so I'm not sure. Joan, do you have any information about that or is it dynamic?
I just received information today that the bids were requested. I don't know from whom or what. That's all I know.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Bob? We have approved that 219.
I don't know, Joan, how should we...
Yeah, Joan, do we have to approve the $219 for, and for just those solar lights now?
Yeah, you can do it now.
Okay. All right. I need a motion to approve the $219 estimated to buy the two solar lights that will better light the top...
The fire department should have one.
You might need one.
Just one, sorry. And that's still 219? Okay.
That's for the garage.
Yeah.
So I need a motion for the...
No, second.
Second. All right. All in favor, state aye.
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 Four ayes. There you go.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think it was last month, Corinne LaTia Wassa came and complained about the potholes. I walked by there. Have you done anything to that yet?
No, it's just going to be paved.
Yeah, that's going to be paved.
And you can put patches in it if you're going to take over it.
What are we having this discussion?
It should start soon after they get the bids and they can award the bids.
It'll probably be a couple of months, Rich, at least.
Yeah.
Maybe can't patch it.
I could look at it, but...
Maybe fill it with gravel. I mean, that would be pretty deep.
A lot of them are pretty deep.
Yeah.
I was in preparation about maybe water may now... Now the condition of the road. Okay.
All right, thanks, Bob. Moving on to 7F Advisory Plan Commission, Ralph Fox.
Yes, so we did have the short-term ordinance public meeting at the fire department commission meeting. And subsequent to that, the town commission did approve that ordinance. Also, the other major thing we discussed was a new residence at 13 Old Hackett. They're going to tear down the...
7F.
Old home and garage there and build a new one. Went through all the plans and gave me the blueprint for the new family's name of Omerfines. Went through all the plans and gave me the blueprint for the new family's name of Omerfins.
Okay. Thank you, Ralph. Moving on to BZA, Matt Bowen, his absence. We'll move forward to 7H, which is your white ditch drainage board, Dinah.
Michigan Shores is not on the agenda, so everything is good and quiet.
Okay. Next up, 7J Website, or 7I Website, Samantha Arnold. We have no one here for Samantha Arnold, so, mom is the word, 7J Nersey.
Nothing, no other new news. There's going to be another meeting taking place over this month, so. I have something for July.
Okay. That will take, that will complete the departmental reports. Moving on to number eight, unfinished business, the town map.
I believe Sam was working on that with Bob.
Yeah.
The only thing is got to get the waterproofing.
Okay.
Looks good.
We approved that already for the staining, the vinyl. Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, moving on to nine, 9A New Business Enforcing Nuisance Ordinance Review of Cases 2023-001 and 2023-002.
Sam would be doing that.
Yeah, I can, I can kick this off if you would. I just want to kind of give a high level background on where the town is going with this. The town has had a nuisance ordinance as code for some time. My knowledge, it's never been enforced. We're not unique in having a nuisance ordinance. I know for a fact that Long Beach has one. And I know that they have enforced that on occasion. These types of laws exist in many communities across Indiana, including Long Beach, as I said, but also across the country. I want to thank Attorney Adamski for his guidance for us on getting to this point and getting us some understanding of what the code would allow and what it, how it should operate and how we should try to cure these issues. We're not trying to create problems for any homeowner or property owner in our community. We're trying to work with them to make sure that they're keeping their properties up to the standards that their neighbors are. The purpose of the reviews that we're going to undertake tonight, I want to thank Deb Chubb first for putting these together. Attorney Adamski agreed that it would be best that we keep the identity private of any homeowner that's being subject potentially to a nuisance action. So tonight, I believe Deb has prepared documents for your review. I know I sent them electronically. But if those could be distributed, we're going to refer to them only as case numbers. So 2023-001 and 2023-002 will be reviewed tonight. And the intent of the review, even though the ordinance doesn't mandate that the town council review and order or vote on whether or not to proceed. Dinah and I and Brad discussed this and we felt like from transparency and consensus perspective, we want to make sure that it's not just one person that's making these determinations and that council is unity as far as moving forward with these actions. Should we decide to move forward with the approval to provide a notice, Deb will be sending out certified letters to the homeowners. The timeline is for them to respond within 30 days. And if, if they do not respond, then there are other procedures that we will follow. They also have the ability to petition a hearing. And from what I understand in an email conversation with Brad Adamski, Attorney Adamski, one of the property owners has already reached out to them. I'm not sure how they found out that they were being potentially reviewed. So we want to potentially give a homeowner an opportunity to petition, to have a hearing where that person can explain or present their case for what the issues are and come up with a workable plan. So why don't we take a few minutes here for you guys to review the two cases. And as far as asking questions and open debate about this, keep in mind not to disclose anything that could be potentially identifiable
Well, I've reviewed these before and I think they're very well prepared
Hey, Sam, in any of these two cases, when you talk about actions required, is Deb the one that's confirming that all of the actions required are completed?
I agree with Ralph that these are very well prepared. And I like that there are suggestions made as to what should be handled. So that's, you know, isn't a blanket.
I do not have any more comments, but we just still have some council members reviewing. Yeah, very well put together, Sam. Thank you.
Credit to Mr. Deb for that.
Are you good?
I'm real good.
Do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. All right, Sam, I think we're good, sir, unless you have any additional commentary.
I do not, other than I think what we want to do is do a roll, individual roll call, a I or an A on the decision to move forward with providing the homeowner notice to abate that form effectively, which you'll see. They'll also receive a copy of the actual ordinance as well.
Okay. Can I get a roll call? All in favor, state aye in your name, please.
Dinah, aye.
Michael Martinez, aye, yes.
Ralph Fox, yes.
Are we doing both at once?
I think so.
Let's do, sorry, thank you, Ralph. So we are going to be moving and voting on case number 2023-001. All in favor, state yes or aye in your name.
Okay, Dinah, yes.
Michael Martinez, yes.
Ralph Fox, yes.
Yes or no?
Dan Paxton, yes.
Yes, all in favor, yeses. Okay. And then now we're going to be voting on case number 2023-002. As before, all in favor, state yes in your name or no in your name.
Dinah, yes.
Michael Martinez, yes.
Ralph Fox, yes.
I'm going to abstain. Rich, um...
Okay.
I...
Dan Paxton, yes.
Yes. So four yeses and the one abstain.
All right.
All right.
What does NOR stand for? Section paragraph.
Which form?
Is that the first one?
First one.
NOR.
NOR. It says above NOR schedule.
Notice of...
Capitalized.
Capitalized NOR.
Above NOR schedule, okay. I think...
I tried to find it, but I'm looking at it because I can't find it.
Deb, since you were working on this, what would the NOR be?
Not sure where...
Last page with the pictures of...
For the first one, 001, the second page.
It's the word NOR. It's the way I read it.
Right, yeah, it's capitalized.
Oh, okay. Is that what it is? Okay.
It's just capitalized?
NOR schedule, okay. I got it.
Let's do it.
Good, Joan. I mean, it's not typo.
It doesn't make much sense.
Well, the word NOR, you say the word NOR, either or, NOR, okay.
All right. Thank you, Sam.
And Deb for this?
And sorry, Deb too. Thank you, appreciate it.
Rich, did you say yes to the first one?
Yes.
Yes, and the abstain on the second.
Thank you. I just wanted to double check.
Okay. Moving forward, 10, Attorney Report, Brad Adamski is not present, so we will have a report for next, next month. 11, miscellaneous business. Any miscellaneous business, council members?
Nothing. Did, was anything brought up about some of the various cases that had already been, should have been fined? Any results from any of that? Was that discussed at all? You know, for instance, the, the home at 103 or something like this, I think.
103 El Portal?
Yeah.
So we have the updates here.
Okay, all right.
Doesn't look like it's anything to fine.
Okay, all right.
Manager's collection.
Okay. That's it.
Okay. 12, communications received.
Nothing.
Okay.
Outside of calls, just for some information.
Got it.
That's it.
Do we have any public comment? Number 14, any council comment? Everybody have a good 4th of July.
I got it.
Oh, okay.
Were you going to do anything about the... Health Forum Drive, two houses with grass and a beehive.
Thank you for bringing that up, okay? That was one of the questions. A suggestion had been made to be by someone that we actually hire someone to cull that lawn off, you know, and then notify the owners that, you know, this has been done and attach some kind of a fee. I don't know whether we've done that kind of thing in the past or not. I know we've notified owners, the two homes on El Portal.
The high grass.
That three foot tall, the high grass, yes.
Didn't we do this last year and we made contact with the homeowner?
Yes, Joan reached out and saw someone.
They what?
They came to vote at the same day I went through.
I don't know if it was the same day, but they did. They were aware that they needed to get out here to do it, but they just hadn't.
I remember.
But that's...
I'd like to interject that I'm aware, you know, of the ability to pick up the phone and call the one homeowner. I don't think it's in the town's best interest to continue to have to do that for this homeowner. They, they need to step up and take responsibility for their actions or inactions. And I, I think we, we don't, as far as I know, have a process where we can just send them a warning. I know that in talking with Chief Swistec, Long Beach has a, has a letter that they generate to notify a homeowner of a pending problem and that action must be taken or the city will go in and do something to cure the issue, whether it be remove a boat from the front yard or cut the lawn. And it also comes along with the fee for the town getting involved and having to do that. So I think, I think ultimately that is a better solution than just trying to crack down the homeowner and chase the homeowner when it's not our responsibility to do so. We need to have a form created that we can use. If we're not going to bring these properties up as nuisance, the nuisance ordinance does allow for us to act upon for excessive vegetation. And in both cases, I believe we have issues. In fact, it would meet the standards of being a nuisance for both, most properties.
There's actually very tall grass at 3915 Hayawata. And I'm, you know, I took a look at it and I said, no, these are definitely weeds. These are not grasses, you know, out there. So it's just stuff that's grown and that's pretty tall compared to El Portal. So that's...
I think Ralph brought up a situation potentially where he feels like there's others and if we need to have something, you know, consider more properties, we need to bring it forward and decide what, what action we want to take. I, I don't intend to go after a person that hasn't mowed their lawn for two weeks while they've been out of town for, for two weeks. But in both the cases that you're talking about on El Portal, those people haven't mowed the lawn all year and got three feet of grass to prove it. And that, in my opinion, it's not the town's problem. And we should act on it so that the property owners won't ever let it happen again.
Well, we don't have that form in place right now, so we have nothing like that to use that would have to be discussed as well as anything with a fee has to be given before a public hearing, if we're going to start doing a fee for something like that. However, what we could do in the short term is we could make sure that we actually post it, for instance, on the website and include it on the next newsletter that, don't forget to mow your lawns. You know, there was a homeowner on Lake Shore Drive, and I didn't look at their property now, but they had not mowed and because they were new owners at the time. And they said, oh, my gosh, I never even thought about it. And, but once we told them, they made sure they kept it short, you know, and trimmed. So I think putting it on the website would probably help now. And then I think that in this case with these two, because we don't have any other kind of form, if we give them the courtesy of a call, I don't know, Joan, do we have phone numbers? Or if we do, then maybe we can give them a call this time around and ask them to please get it done ASAP. You know, and then going forward, we can work on something going forward, so.
Well, I, what I was saying, Dinah, is we already have it in place. We already have the nuisance violation in place. The nuisance violation doesn't mean it has to be a total catastrophe.
I understand. Okay.
There, there, there are clauses within section 12-1 offends the decency or offensive to the senses or essentially interferes with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property or tends to depreciate the value of the property of others. So the folks that live around these homes have had to face that. People that drive up and down El Portal have already had to face that. And the fines that we have, we have, the ordinance allows for a fine up to $2,500 a day. Now, certainly, we would never consider for an uncut lawn, a fine of $2,500 a day, but we could pay, it's going to be $10 a day. Something that makes people understand that they need to take responsibility so we don't have to deal with this.
Okay.
It's already in place. It's already in place. We already have the nuisance ordinance. We can adapt it to meet, it covers noxious weeds and other rank vegetation.
Okay. I appreciate what you're saying, Sam, and I don't... I appreciate what you're saying, Sam, and I don't disagree with you in the whole, in the general on this. However, I would not compare these two lawns to the cases that we discussed and voted on, okay?
It doesn't matter.
You know, right now, no, no. Sam, please, let me finish. Let, let me finish, please. I don't disagree at all, and I think going forward, if people ignore what we are telling them about, then we go forward and do exactly what you're saying with this nuisance. Now, yes, I understand, the one home was notified last year, I believe, by Joan that they need to mow it, and then they came out and they mowed it very quickly. With the other property, the smaller one, I think that now the gentleman who actually owns it is not capable of doing it. He's not even in the home. So whoever's taking care of this home probably has not even thought about it. So I think being courteous, we can first approach them, and then if nothing is done, then we can go forward. That would be my thought. I don't know what the others think, but you know, that would be my thought.
The nuisance, the nuisance order gives them 30 days to cure the issue without any ramification.
I think we need to get a little...
Pardon?
I think we need, what you're talking about is just contact them. Like you said, I don't think that whoever is willing, this gentleman is a state now.
Think.
Think where, and...
Take over.
We're a community, right? We're not some big business that we can't think a little bit and share a little...
Yeah, I'm in agreement.
Happens every year.
Yeah, I know. Sam, I'm in agreement, at least giving them a notification. I mean, I know it's not in the, it's not in the rules, but there's a difference between a small town and, you know, a city that just, Chicago, you know, dropping tickets off with, you know, notifications. So I do tend to agree with Dinah, at least giving them a notice. And then what did you mention, though, about 30 days to take action?
Yeah, the nuisance action, when we send this notice to abate, it gives the homeowner 30 days to cure the problem.
John.
Or to start, to begin to take action to cure the problem. If it's a major issue, they have to show that they're taking steps to correct the problem. So in the case of a three-foot long, it's a heck of a lot different than some of the others.
Right. Well, you have my feedback. Other council members, anything regarding this?
Well, I'll send them a call. I'm not one to call them, so I don't know how much effort that is, but that seems like a lot less effort than...
I agree.
But I do agree that this is an ongoing issue. There's, I walk the town all the time. There's 30 homes, maybe 50 homes that fall within the, they haven't cut the grass much.
Yeah.
And what, what is the rule? Is it, we're going to put a limit on it of eight inches?
There is a rule. We have a rule, we have an ordinance. Joan, what is it, seven inches or eight inches?
I don't know. I don't have the ordinance.
Yeah, but there is an ordinance about that.
That would be good, but I have not been able to find it.
Yeah.
So maybe food for thought to talk about in the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm all for...
Okay.
But if you want, if you want the grass cut before the Fourth of July, probably going to have to call them.
Yeah, I think that would make it a lot faster.
Any comment, Rich?
No, I'd least reach out.
Reach out.
But it's good.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Sam, for the comments. It looks like we're going to be reaching out to notify them to cut it. If no action, then we'll follow through with the abatement that you had mentioned.
Yeah.
And the 30 days to take action for fines. Any other council comments on any other items? All right, so I'll pause, meeting adjourned. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that a motion.
In a second.
That was a hurry.
All right. Meeting has been adjourned at 8:13.
I'm a fit.
8:13, yes.